All right, good evening. Today is Monday, February 5th, 2024. This is a special meeting and workshop with the Board of Education to have a motion to open the meeting. Laura, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Great. A first order of business, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll jump right into our presentation first. We have a little bit of business left the board to do later on, but that's not too bad. We'll get right into the topic for tonight. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Goodman.
Yeah. I think you're okay.
Okay. Gary, are they okay?
Yeah, you guys fine.
It's like the last supper, just more. It's like the last supper.
Can everybody see, are you okay? Can everybody see the screen?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to stand before you today as we continue to champion our district's mission of preparing all students for excellence. This year, we began with a focus on post-secondary success, understanding its crucial role in shaping the futures of our students. Recently, our principal, Mr. Rodney Arthur, and his administrative team, and Dr. Christopher Keough, presented to the Board of Education, sharing the significant work they and our guidance department have undertaken to support our students as they navigate the college application process. This work was done to ensure alignment between the efforts of our guidance department with our students' needs and aspirations. Tonight, we present the second part of this work, and it's also part of our budget presentation. This is an in-depth analysis that has been instrumental in paving the way for meaningful changes to our curriculum. A very special thank you to our high school teachers. Their relentless effort, meeting regularly and analyzing our course offerings with meticulous attention to detail, has allowed for the rigorous, diverse, and engaging course catalog you will see presented this evening. This effort aligns with two of our goals: the examination of advanced courses and the exploration of BoSS as an option for a small group of students. The forthcoming presentation will primarily address the first aspect, which revolves around maximizing our existing resources. Mr. Arthur and Dr. Keough have made diligent efforts to the best of their abilities to operate within the constraints of our current budget. Ms. Sparks and I will present on other alternatives and their impact in the next presentation after they finish their presentation tonight, and the board can look at how they want to go in terms of what resources we do have. Tonight marks a significant moment for Tocco schools. We are taking a bold step forward, embarking on a journey that promises to enrich and enhance the educational experience of our students. It is with great excitement that I welcome Mr. Rodney Arthur, our esteemed middle high school principal, and Dr. Christopher Keough, our forward-thinking director of curriculum, to share the results of their comprehensive analysis and the transformative changes they are implementing in collaboration with our teaching staff. Before we get started, we always look at this chart in every one of our budget presentations. The four pillars of our, and everything we do, really. The four pillars of our strategic plan are not mere abstract concepts. They serve as our compass, guiding every action we take and providing the framework for the analysis and changes you will see presented tonight. Each pillar has been crafted to form the foundation of our work. Under diverse needs of learners, we recognize that every student is unique, with their own strengths, challenges, and aspirations. By fostering a supportive social-emotional environment that addresses students' emotional well-being, we prepare them to navigate life's challenges with grace and courage. Our commitment to contemporary teaching and learning means that we equip our students with the skills they need to thrive in a dynamic and rapidly changing world. Lastly, just as we champion the growth of our students, we also prioritize the continual growth of our educators under professional learning. Each of these pillars represent a crucial facet of our work and the work we present this evening in alignment with those ideals. Now, we will hear from Mr. Arthur and Dr. Keough. And before we get started, I just want to show the board, this is what our new course curriculum will look like, and they will discuss it with you. We will pass it around. This is just a blinded copy, so you can see how well it's done, and you'll hear more about it as the presentation continues. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President Kasten, Vice President Benke, esteemed Board trustees, and the Tocco community. I would like to begin by expressing my heartfelt appreciation to the exceptional faculty and staff at Tocco Middle High School. Their unwavering commitment and tireless effort in the service of our scholars are truly commendable. Day in and day out, their dedication to the well-being and academic growth of our children is evident, both inside and outside the classroom. I am truly grateful to work alongside such a dedicated team. The positive impact that they have had on our students extend beyond academics, shaping their character, fostering a love of learning, and preparing them for the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead. In her opening comments, Dr. Goodman referenced our core mission: to prepare every student for excellence. In our last workshop titled "Supporting Scholars for Lifelong Success," we delved into the concept of freedom of choice by highlighting initiatives and our efforts in the areas of curriculum instruction, defining the role of school counselors, and resources available to students in the school counseling department, defining expectations of students in grades nine through twelve, underscoring our beliefs that excellence is a journey, unique to each scholar's chosen pathway, but supported by a community. As an educational institution, we hold a pivotal role in this journey. Our responsibility is to provide a curriculum that not only is competitive and rigorous, but also diverse and reflects the myriad of pathways our scholars may choose to pursue. It's with this goal in mind that we gather here this evening, to share with the Board of Education and our community the strides that we've made in enhancing educational opportunities for our scholars. Our efforts have been multifaceted, focusing on the following areas: one, building partnerships with both regionally and with the world of higher education; two, partnering in professional development; three, conducting in-depth analysis of student data informing our decisions; four, engaging in professional networks; five, and finally, reviewing and extensive literature on the college admission process, ensuring our approach remains current and effective. Tonight, we will look closely at these initiatives. We will provide you with a comprehensive picture of our direction and the future we envision for our scholars. This vision, while ambitious, does carry budgetary implications. These financial aspects will be further discussed by Ms. Sparks and Dr. Goodman in their presentation. This work started with an extensive system analysis, examining our internal practices and assessing the practices of both private and public schools in our region. In the upcoming slides, I will guide you through this detailed analysis. This comprehensive review includes several key components: gathering valuable feedback, fostering partnerships, and engaging in book studies, and collaborating closely with our teachers. Each element plays a vital role in shaping the direction of our work. In my first few months, I've had the privilege of collecting valuable feedback from various sources. Through reviewing the district-wide strategic plan, receiving feedback from the board trustees, analyzing student assessment data, participating in PTA meetings, facilitating principal coffee events, engaging in meetings with students and families, and holding numerous conversations with faculty and staff, I have heard the different perspectives from various stakeholders within our school community. A recurring theme has emerged from these discussions: the recognition that every student's pathway is unique. Families have voiced various concerns and expressed their needs, some advocating for more advanced placement courses across all grades, while others wish to transition their children from region's level courses to career and technical educational opportunities. This valuable feedback has been the driving force behind our analysis and the subsequent changes we intend to implement for the upcoming school year. As noted, our scholars, current and graduates, too, have been instrumental in shaping our path forward. Through surveys of school climate, internship preferences, coupled with informal dialogues, we have learned their desire for a diverse course catalog, their insight on post-graduation needs, and their vocal interest integrating their passion into our curriculum has not only been enlightening, but inspiring. Our faculty and staff, through faculty and department meetings and individual conversations, have demonstrated a strong interest in introducing new courses and restructuring existing ones. These new courses will promote student interest and engagement while reducing study halls and at the same time exposing our students to rigorous content with the goal of preparing them for academic excellence and freedom of choice.
Why do we place such emphasis on the course catalog? The answer lies in the profound impact that high school course selection has on a student's future. We understand that the courses our students take during their high school years are pivotal, shaping not just their academic development, but also their readiness for college and beyond. Our approach also acknowledges the shifting landscape that standardized testing like the SATs and the ACTs play in the future of college admissions and how those roles are evolving. To initiate our efforts, we conducted a comprehensive review of course catalogs from schools in our region, both public and private. This exercise revealed many similarities. We focused our examination on comparing the courses offered with the feedback received from stakeholders. We engaged in a comparative analysis of what other schools similar to ours offer. We've also undergone a review of our high school profile, convening a group of individuals to examine how we can best highlight our high school offerings to institutions outside of ours. Additionally, to support looking outwards, we leveraged professional networks. We attended meetings with colleagues throughout the region, and we engaged in professional development, including training on the master scheduling creation process with power schools. We collaborated with colleges and universities, especially those with which our students have shown an interest, such as Binghamton and Manhattanville. We collected data and consulted to learn about trends and patterns. We forged relationships with esteemed institutions like Syracuse, Manhattanville, and Iona. Thanks to the board's approval of a generous donation at our previous meeting, we can further support our students with college visits. Our goal is to ensure our students are fluent in the language of post-secondary education. While middle schools do not have formal course catalogs per se, we have engaged the middle school in this work. During department meetings and extended days, staff have examined offerings of schools in our region. They reviewed school websites to understand the course sequence that leads to post-secondary success, and they have crafted website drafts that we continue to develop. Our commitment to cultivating a rich selection of courses is backed by extensive research. We've delved into books and articles that shed light onto effective curriculum design and catalog development, notably "Who Gets In and Why?" by Jeffrey Salingo, as highlighted by Ms. Benke, has provided unique insights into college admissions decision-making. These have guided both our resources and our resource allocation. So what have we learned? We have gained significant insights into the direction our educational programs have headed, and we have identified key areas of interest and needs. Our analysis, discussion, and research converged around two recurring themes: first, the importance of supporting scholars as they explore the world of work; and second, the need to increase rigor to better prepare students for higher education pursuits. Among other things, we also uncovered the need to enhance opportunities for gathering student feedback, align student interests with internship placements and the course catalog, update and improve the accessibility of our course catalog, conduct a comprehensive review of the master scheduling process, implement dual enrollment courses, strengthen partnerships with colleges and universities, update and enhance our high school profile, revamp our websites, enhance the college application process to make it more efficient and supportive of our student goals. This process led us to consider our student population. For example, through this analysis, we discovered that more than 70% of our scholars are student athletes, many of whom are academically strong and recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as athletic scholars worthy of distinction. This demographic insight significantly influenced our course designs, leading to offerings such as sports medicine. Our overarching goal is to create a robust catalog that equips students with the skills and knowledge required for success in the workforce and higher education.
We're committed to offering a curriculum that is responsive to our students' interests and aspirations, ensuring that they are well-prepared for the challenges and opportunities that we'll encounter in their future in academic and career pathways. To achieve this, we have undertaken a series of initiatives and collaborations. We have organized workshops for families and students to prepare them for post-secondary success. This was done in partnership with universities such as Binghamton. These informational sessions, including an alumni panel, which was convened for seniors to provide them with valuable insights into post-graduation pathways and career choices. We have engaged in a comprehensive analysis of our course catalog with a focus on AP and occupational educational courses. As discussed, this was conducted to ensure relevance and alignment. All core academic departments were actively engaged in a collaborative review of our course offerings facilitated by catalogs from neighboring school districts. We worked closely with our middle school counterparts to develop an informal website outlining courses of study within each core academic department. We coordinated training in our master scheduling tools in conjunction with our regional information center. The administrators and school counselors teamed, conducted book studies, again, "Who Gets In and Why?", which provided valuable insights into the college admission and the decision-making process. We also enhanced our school counseling with new furniture and creating a welcoming environment for students seeking guidance and support. These initiatives collectively underscore our commitment to providing a well-rounded and supportive educational experience for our scholars. We aim to prepare them for successful futures in both higher education and the world of work, equipping them with skills, knowledge, resources to ensure freedom of choice. The internship program returned to Tocco High School in the spring of 2017, providing a multitude of benefits for both students and organizations. For students, it is a chance to gain real-world experience, applying academic knowledge in practical settings and developing crucial skills. In order to enhance students' experience, this school year, we conducted a survey to gauge students' interests, underscoring our commitment to tailoring an education to individual student needs. This survey was instrumental in ensuring the relevancy and effectiveness of our internship program. Our internship program, similar to the concept to the on-the-job training provided by BoSS, is designed to take students beyond the classroom and immerse them in real work environment. The program can vary in duration, ranging from three to six weeks, and is heavily influenced by the student's interest, aspirational goal, and assessment schedule. All students are matched with their internship placement by April 15th. As some parents may note, in last week's weekly bulletin, we provided families with an update outlining the sequence for the internship program. This approach underscored our commitment to provide practical, hands-on experiences that are aligned to students' interests and complement their academic course studies. Through these internships, students gain invaluable insights into the world of work.
As we unveil our new course catalog tonight, let me highlight several new courses that capture our students' growing interest in hands-on learning and preparation for this world of work. Firstly, let's look at Counting, a course proposed by our math department. This course is designed to seamlessly integrate the key themes of mathematics with practical work experiences. It's not just about learning numbers, it's about understanding how these numbers translate into business scenarios. Moving on, we have Game Design. This course is an exciting venture into the world of computer science, where students will not only create their own games, but develop proficiency in Python, a crucial language in today's technology sector. This course goes beyond traditional programming, it's about applying computational thinking and creativity to solving complex problems. Additionally, we're continuing courses like Entrepreneurship, Financial Markets, and Fashion Business Economics. Our diverse course offerings aim to provide students with a broader spectrum of crucial work skills and training, all aligned with our rigorous academic program. We believe that these courses will not only prepare our students for specific careers, but equip them with a versatile skill set, fostering adaptability and innovation in whatever career path they choose.
At our alumni college panel held in December, we had the privilege of hearing from our graduates about their college experience at universities like Syracuse, Albany, and Princeton. This underscores something we have come across in the literature: testimonials such as these are invaluable, bringing the college experience to life for our current scholars. We have also planned college visits. In addition to these visits, we have been actively exploring dual enrollment opportunities with institutions such as Syracuse University and Manhattanville College. These programs offer high school students college courses with a significant cost savings through the transferring of credits. Another key aspect of our approach is cultivating strong relationships with local universities, and Manhattanville College stands out as a prime example. Last year, we saw one student apply and got accepted to Manhattanville, and this year, that number has risen to seven, a significant portion of our senior class. Showing their commitment to Tocco, the vice president of Manhattanville College coordinated an Acceptance Day event, celebrating our scholars by providing them with welcoming gifts. We are planning workshops for students and families with the dean of admissions from Manhattanville College, who will share invaluable insights about the college application process. This event will be scheduled for the spring. Traditionally, we have arranged for college representatives to come in and meet with our juniors and seniors. These sessions have proven to be highly informative and beneficial in guiding our students towards making informed choices about their post-secondary education. Recognizing the importance of starting early, we are also beginning to shift our focus towards having college reps meet with our students in the 10th grade. In fact, we are exploring ways to integrate our college partnerships into our new student orientation held over the summer. To enhance the effectiveness of our families and counseling meetings, we are implementing a structured folder system. This system is designed to facilitate alignment with information, ensuring that it seamlessly connects to our orientation program and continues to guide families through their journey with us. During these meetings, parents receive a wealth of information, which sometimes can leave them feeling overwhelmed. Moving forward, we are committed to providing a more organized and comprehensive experience. This includes the introduction of a folder for every grade-level meeting. Within these folders, we will ensure that agenda items are clearly outlined, allowing attendees to have a clear understanding of what to be discussed. Additionally, handouts and follow-up materials will be included in these meetings. This means that parents will leave these sessions not only with valuable information, but also with tangible resources, attachments, clarification regarding graduation requirements, and a copy of our course catalog. As mentioned previously, our school counseling office has been redesigned, making it more welcoming to students and families and to college representatives. All of these underscore our unwavering commitment to enhancing educational opportunities for our students, aligning perfectly with our overarching goal of preparing them for academic excellence.
And that brings us to the work we've done in relation to the course offerings that have been shared. To achieve these objectives, we've initiated meetings with teachers across the different departments. Teachers and staff reviewed course descriptions from six other school districts, engaged in that comparative analysis, and that all sparked healthy and insightful conversations. Our dedicated departments contributed valuable recommendations, leading to the proposal of new courses, the reworking of existing ones, and they will plan to implement these changes in some teacher-led summer curriculum work. In the following slides, you will find a detailed presentation of the offerings we plan to introduce in the upcoming year in the four main content areas. Keep an eye out for asterisks next to new courses, signaling exciting new additions to our curriculum. So we'll begin with math. The math department offers a variety of pathways to cater to the diverse needs of our students. This diversity is partly due to the fact that our students begin their math journey in the middle school, that so many of them do, beginning with algebra in the eighth grade. This acceleration results in a bifurcated path in the high school, with different content needing to be offered at different grade levels. To streamline this pathway and provide clarity to families planning their freshman year and beyond, we have carefully designed a slate of offerings that provides a clear sense of what the next four years should look like. We've already discussed accounting, a course that has the potential to develop into a dual enrollment course with a leading university, and to offer college credits. Accounting requires a budgetary increase of 1.2 FTE, which will be presented in Dr. Goodman and Ms. Sparks' upcoming budget presentation. Additionally, we're thrilled to introduce AP Statistics, our second AP offering in the math department. This decision to add statistics as an AP option was influenced by literature encouraging schools to invest in the development of statistics offerings. In the previous year, we launched a project-based statistics course that delved into web traffic analytics. This year, we are planning a symposium evening that will connect statistics with artificial intelligence. Looking ahead to the next year, we are excited to offer statistics as an advanced placement offering, further enriching our math curriculum. In our efforts to enhance our ELA offerings, we've made significant revisions. One notable change is the transformation of English 12 into English 12 Humanities in Action. This new course is designed to immerse students in a range of literature, writing, and media, all with a strong focus on authentic relevance. This initiative is influenced by the Learner Active Technology Infused Classroom, which emphasizes active learning and technology integration. Additionally, we're excited to introduce a new course denoted by an asterisk, AP Language and Composition. This course, planned for the 11th grade, will provide students with the opportunity to delve into the elements of argument and composition. Through this course, students develop critical writing and reading skills, engage with nonfiction texts from various historical periods, and craft essays with different aims. We anticipate that this new AP offering will significantly expand our literacy skills. Moving on to science. Science education in New York State is experiencing some significant shifts, and we're dedicated to aligning our course offerings with these changes and providing students with phenomenon-based learning in accordance with new standards. As part of this restructuring, we're introducing courses such as anatomy and physiology, sports medicine, astronomy, and climate issues. These courses resonate with our student body and provide opportunities for active learning. Furthermore, our pilot program for AP Environmental Science has been successful. As a result, it will be a permanent addition to our science offerings beginning next year. This means that incoming freshmen who've completed Living Environment in the eighth grade are eligible to begin their high school journey with an AP course. It's important to note that taking an AP course may mean that a student does not enroll in a course necessary for an advanced region's diploma. However, we want to emphasize that AP courses are highly valued by colleges and universities, more so than an advanced region's diploma from New York State. Many high-performing schools in our region have made the decision to prioritize AP classes over the advanced regions distinction, offering only the five required region's exams. If a student is interested in cultivating a strong academic portfolio, they should seize opportunities for the AP over the advanced region's diploma. Ultimately, our science curriculum presented here is modern, exciting, and designed to be an immersive, responsive curriculum that responds to the needs and interests of our student population. And lastly, our social studies department has a long history of offering engaging electives, including the ever-popular psychology, and is known for having the most advanced placement courses of any department. Looking ahead to the next academic year, we have exciting plans to expand our social studies offerings. We'll be requesting a 1.2 FTE increase for the social studies department. This increase will enable us to introduce the course AP World History Modern. In this course, our 10th graders will embark on a comprehensive exploration of cultural, economic, political, and social developments that have shaped the world over the most recent few centuries. Throughout the course, students will engage in analysis of historical texts, visual sources, and various forms of historical evidence. We're excited to offer this enriching and challenging course to our students, further enhancing their understanding of global history and preparing them for future academic pursuits.
In summary, we have made significant strides in achieving the goal we set forth for our academic programs. Specifically, we have focused on two key areas: increasing our advanced placement offerings while at the same time introducing new elective courses for students to explore potential career pathways. Our efforts have resulted in a notable expansion of our AP course offerings, increasing the total number from 12 to 16. This includes one AP course
We're excited to offer this enriching and challenging course to our students, further enhancing their understanding of global history and preparing them for future academic pursuits.
In summary, we have made significant strides in achieving the goal we set forth for our academic programs. Specifically, we have focused on two key areas: increasing our advanced placement offerings, while at the same time introducing new elective courses for students to explore potential career pathways. Our efforts have resulted in a notable expansion of our AP course offerings, increasing the total number from 12 to 16. This includes one AP course in each of our core content areas. This expansion has garnered positive feedback from our college representative partners. Furthermore, for our students who are keen on exploring various career options, we are introducing three new elective courses. These courses will offer valuable insights into the fields such as game design, engineering 2, and accounting, allowing students to gain a deeper understanding of potential career pathways and interests. We are committed to providing a well-rounded and enriching educational experience for our scholars.
Our course catalog clarifies other procedures and processes aligned with the high expectations we have for our students. For example, we've clearly identified our expectations for enrolling in classes. Students are encouraged to take on challenging courses whenever possible. Pushing boundaries is a key to personal growth, and we believe in our students' innate potential to excel. If a student is eligible for an honors course, we will expect the student to take an honors course. This is an opportunity to stand out academically, as well as prepare for the rigor of college-level work. With the increase of electives, we also expect a reduction in study halls. This will lead to more engaged learning time. We are also clarifying our expectations that seniors are expected to maintain at least five credits, building an academic portfolio that sets them apart. Our new course catalog also includes our updated ad drop process, promotional requirements advanced to next grade, and the process for enrolling in honors, acceleration, and AP courses. These have typically been found on our website, but our new course catalog includes them all as supplemental material.
While we're working, the course catalog has been a significant focus of ours over the past few months. We have also engaged in other initiatives, and we are pleased to share them with the board and our community. Recognizing the significance of our high school profile, we have undertaken a comprehensive analysis of other profiles throughout the region while simultaneously collecting information for the enhancement of our own profile. This endeavor has involved numerous meetings, in-depth analysis, and the collective setting of expectations for what we aim to achieve with our profile that truly encapsulates our school's essence. In collaboration with Junior Achievement of New York, Tocco is proud to announce a special event bringing our youngest scholars and our upper-class scholars together. Scheduled for Wednesday, March 20, this event will engage kindergarten first graders and second-grade students in an interactive and educational lesson led by Tocco High School upper-class students. The focus of these lessons will be on appropriate financial literacy curriculum. The Junior Achievement, known as JA, program uses this event has been thoughtfully developed by educators in this nonprofit organization. They have been consistently evaluated and updated to align seamlessly with both state and national academic standards. To ensure the success of this initiative, high school students from Tocco will undergo training conducted by JA staff. Participating in high school students will be part of the JA High School Heroes Program, an exciting service-learning and leadership-development opportunity. Through this program, they will take on the role of JA volunteers, allowing them to cultivate essential skills such as communication, organization, presentation, public speaking, and leadership. Simultaneously, they will earn valuable community service hours, contributing to their personal growth and development. Special thanks to Mr. Marash and the staff for partnering with us and bringing this initiative to the Tocco School District.
While much of tonight's presentation focuses on the changes at the high school, middle school engagement was instrumental in understanding the educational pathway that leads to post-secondary success. Our middle school staff actively reviewed websites of schools across the region, seeking insights into our own course offerings. One compelling example comes from our science department in their efforts to revamp their website. They recognize the project as an example, as an opportunity to both showcase and inform. With great enthusiasm, they've been actively developing informative content for the middle school science website. Their focus is to provide an engaging platform where families, students, and outsiders can learn about what our students are studying. Each department is actively working on developing informative pages for their respective subject areas. We've also been proactive in creating new opportunities for middle school students. Mr. Calasuno has taken the lead in establishing new clubs and extracurricular activities, enriching the overall student experience. We are currently engaged in the process of exploring a new elective that will focus on general music, podcasting, and audiovisuals, allowing students to explore their creativity and communication skills. Furthermore, we are dedicated to strengthening our math acceleration program to ensure students entering eighth grade algebra have a strong foundation. We recognize the importance of providing additional support to help students excel in their math studies in the seventh grade. Lastly, after a year of piloting the Living Environment course at the eighth-grade level, we have seen numerous benefits and successes. As a result, we are committed to maintaining this course as the accelerated option in our eighth-grade science program, offering students a valuable opportunity to engage with advanced science topics.
Before we pass the microphone over to Dr. Goodman and Ms. Sparks, we want to thank them both for their collaboration. Dr. Goodman's insight into the college application process and what makes students stand out have been valuable in these efforts. Additionally, under our leadership, all of our efforts have been focused on achieving our strategic planned goals. Ms. Sparks has been creative and thoughtful, holding us accountable to considering all resources. Thank you. We also extend a thank you to Dr. Sweeney, Mr. Calasuno, Mr. DeBellas, and to the entire faculty and staff of Tocco Middle High School, who have worked tirelessly towards our mission of preparing all students for excellence. Thank you also to the Board of Education for your guidance, your thoughtful feedback, as well as your commitment and service to our scholars. Thank you.
and the teachers and staff. That was an amazing presentation. And those of you who have seen our new, at least the board members have seen, our new course catalog. It's really excellent, and a lot of work went into that, so we're very appreciative of that work. But that work all has an impact on our school district budget, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. And there will be some implications on what we decide to do or not do. And this is just the beginning of the budget process, but since most of our changes and thoughts are going into middle school, high school, especially the high school, we wanted to make sure that the board had some awareness that some decisions may affect other decisions. So again, I thank everybody who presented so far. And as we delve into the financial roadmap that keeps our educational mission on track, helping every student strive for excellence, it's important to highlight the vital role of smart budgeting in nurturing the success and growth of our academic community. Our dedication to exceptional education shines not only just in our classrooms, but also in how we responsibly manage the resources entrusted to us. The process of shaping our school budget is an artful blend of meticulous planning and strategic decision-making, ensuring that resources are wisely allocated. In this presentation, Ms. Sparks will guide us through the key elements of our budget, shedding light on both revenues and expenses, and discussing the initial assumptions that form the basis of our budget. These assumptions lay the groundwork for further analysis and adjustments, providing a springboard for our financial journey together. So now, when we look at budget goals, alignment with the strategic plan, again, as we said at the beginning of the last presentation, is crucial for effective and efficient use of resources in pursuit of our educational objectives. By linking our budget to the strategic plan, we aim to prioritize initiatives that directly contribute to the growth and success of our students. Additionally, complying with the tax cap and other legal mandates is essential for financial responsibility and transparency. The tax cap imposes limits on our annual growth of property taxes, and adhering to these constraints ensures that our budgeting practices are in line with legal requirements. Ms. Sparks?
The budget process begins in late fall, early winter, with the administrative team reviewing and evaluating current programs and projected needs. As an administrative team, we are dedicated to using our resources as efficiently as possible. Identifying mandated and ordinary contingent expenses, debt, utilities, and any expenses legally required to operate and maintain school buildings, preserve the property of the district, and ensure the safety of the students. We identify contractually obligated salary and benefit increases. They are applied based on each collective bargaining agreement. External information becomes available throughout November through April, with New York State releasing the ERS, the Employees Retirement System, rates sometime in November, Department of Taxation and Finance releasing the Tax-Based Growth Factor in December, OSC, the State Comptroller's Office, releases the CPI factor used for the tax cap formula in January, health insurance rates become available to us also sometime in January, along with the governor's proposed budget to use as a starting point. In February, we get the Teachers Retirement System rates. The state will typically adopt its final budget April 1st, which allows us to complete our budget process. Our presentations start in February and extend throughout the budget vote in May.
School districts in New York State are required to adopt a balanced budget. On one side of the equation, we have the expenses needed to operate for the school year, which must be balanced out by our revenues. Our two largest revenue sources are set and capped by New York State, the first being real property taxes, which since the 2012-2013 school year are limited to the maximum allowable under state-prescribed formula, and the other is state aid. Tocco is also known for outstanding special education programs, providing programs that not all school districts can, which provides the opportunity for other school districts to send students to our district, providing we have space. This creates a stream of non-resident tuition. Appropriated fund balance is the planned use of savings to balance the budget. The major expense categories that make up our budget are salary and benefits, curriculum instruction, facilities, maintenance, and operations, transportation, and debt services. Ms. Sparks will now dive into the known factors at this time.
Real property taxes make up approximately 78% of our revenue budget. The amount a school district or municipality can levy is capped by the state. The New York State property tax cap requires municipalities, including school districts, to adhere to a formula set by the state comptroller when calculating their maximum allowable tax levy for the following school year. The first year of implementation was the 2012-13 school year, and since its inception of the tax cap law in 1213, Tocco's average tax levy increase has been around 2%. While every school district and municipality follows the exact same formula, each can yield different results based on district-specific inputs. One myth we often hear about the New York State tax cap law is that it's 2%. This is false. It is not always a 2% cap. When calculating the maximum allowable tax levy under the formula, District A could have a tax levy cap of 1%, and District B can have a tax levy cap of 5%, and both will be in compliance. Here you see the complex New York State prescribed formula used by all school districts throughout the state to calculate the maximum allowable levy. Two of the main factors in this calculation are provided by New York State. They are the Tax-Based Growth Factor, which measures brick-and-mortar growth in our school district boundaries. The Tax-Based Growth Factor for the 2024-25 school year is 1.0076. The lowest it can be is a 1.00. The other factor in the formula that is provided by New York State is CPI, or the rate of inflation. The most recent CPI per the state comptroller is 4.12%. However, the tax cap formula states that we must use the lesser of 2% or CPI. So while CPI is over 4% for 2024-25 school year, the rate we use for the formula is The board determines the amount of the tax levy within the levy limit, tax cap, as part of the budget process. The formula provided by the state computes the maximum allowable limit. The board can set a levy at this amount, below this amount, but if the levy exceeds this amount, it would have to be approved by a 60% of voters to exceed the cap. The actual levy for the current school year, 2023-24, was set well below the limit. For the 23-24 school year, our levy limit increased, the maximum amount we would have been able to levy under the law is $1,333,190, or 4.38%. But the actual levy that was adopted in the budget was $500,000 below this maximum allowable amount, with an increase of 2.74% and $833,190. Here you see the projected levy limit for the 2024-25 school year. This is just a draft calculation and illustrates that we would come to a maximum limit as of today at 3.34%, or an increase of $1,42,945. While expenses are increasing at the rate of inflation or more in some cases, like benefits, our tax levy is capped at a rate below the most recent inflation rate. We are still analyzing data from New York State and short-term borrowing rates on our bands, which impact the formula. This tax cap calculation assumes that we will be moving ahead with all our capital project work this summer, and we might need to revise these numbers as it is not looking like we will receive approval from the state in time to move forward with construction in the summer of '24. Also, since the recently opened bids for the H-Track work we plan to do this summer came in higher than anticipated, we will most likely have to adjust our numbers as the process unfolds with the board and facilities planning committee. If we do no work this summer, we would be looking at a tax cap levy limit of approximately Some of our other revenue assumptions: non-resident tuition is projected to remain flat for the 2024-25 school year. State aid, our second-largest revenue source. So many districts throughout the state are still recovering from the news in the governor's proposal. The information she proposed last week is very different from what we have seen in recent years. Our foundation aid is fully phased in as of the current 2023-24 school year, and the initial proposal from the governor proposes a 3.2% increase in foundation aid, or $123,280. As you have probably seen in the news, the governor's proposal includes changes to the foundation aid formula, which for the first time is fully funded. These changes came with no warning whatsoever. While Tocco is seeing an increase in state aid, we would have received more under the original formula. The changes she is proposing is to eliminate the decades-long save harmless provision where districts that are maxed out under the formula would receive at least the same amount of aid they received in the previous year. The proposal also changes the inflation factor that is used in the formula, replacing the current rate of inflation with a multi-year average. This change means that rather than using the December inflation factor of around 4.1%, she is proposing to use a new average of 2.4%. The state is projecting a budget deficit, and this is reminiscent of the gap elimination adjustment we saw many years ago. Part of our state aid is we are projecting building aid to start flowing in on 2021 capital projects. That is not reflected in her proposal, as we have not fully completed these projects. The proposal includes a 3% increase in transportation aid, but this is driven by increased expenses. We have to spend more to get more. These numbers are only proposed, and the legislature still needs to approve her proposal. We are hoping that our strong advocacy efforts will work, and the formula will not be modified when the governor adopts her budget on April 1st. Other revenues that we roll over are interest earnings. While interest rates are at historical highs, we have to be careful with budgeting for this volatile, highly fluctuating revenue. The last thing we want to do is create a large budget gap. We increase the We increased the revenue budget for the current school year and are proposing a modest increase for the 24-25 school year. County sales tax. School districts receive a portion of sales tax collected by the county. We have many years of historical data to project this revenue. And pilot payments are set by agreements that are already in place. This chart shows the rollover of our current revenue budget with the previously shown tax cap calculation, state aid, and other local revenues. Based on current rollover assumptions, we are at an increase of 4.48%, or $1,798,932. Real property taxes make up 78% of our budget, and state aid makes up 13%. When rolling over our budget, it appears we can lower appropriated fund balance. However, this is still a rollover budget and, as stated previously, is subject to change. Now we turn to expenditures. When we start the budget process, our first step is to roll over the current budget. The purpose of moving expenditures over from the current fiscal year is to develop a baseline for budget development. We account for known increases and assumptions. A known increase for the 24-25 school year are salary increases based on collective bargaining agreements. Health insurance increases also for next year. 11% increase for SWISSCHIP, with SWISSCHIP being our largest plan. This double-digit increase comes after years of increases below the industry average and took all the members of the SWISSCHIP consortium by surprise. For 2024 calendar year, the NICE ship rates went up 11.22%. We will not have the 2025 rates until well into the next school year. So we are just working on projections. State retirement systems. We have an estimate for the Teachers Retirement System. The final number won't come out until a little later on. So we are at between 9.75% and 10.25% of salaries. The current rate is 9.76%. And ERS is for our non-certified staff. It's the Employees Retirement System, is increasing to 15.2% of salaries from the current rate of 13.1%. One of our other expenditures that we roll over is out-of-district tuitions, and this is based on current enrollment and mandated CSE recommendations. We also look at transportation costs. The 23-24 school year was the first year of our five-year bid, so we do know the increases for next year. They will be 5%. And our transportation costs include in-district home-to-school transportation, out-of-district home-to-school transportation for special education students, non-public school, and athletic trips. Debt service costs are projected based on amortization schedules for district-issued bonds, bands, and TANs. Bonds are long-term financing instruments amortized over a period of more than one year. Bands are, also known as bond anticipation notes, are short-term financing instruments that can be renewed annually for up to five years. So for the current projects we're in, we are currently in short-term financing for them, which is bands. What is still unknown is whether or not we will need short-term borrowings for construction work this summer. Then we go to transfers to other funds. Our transfer to capital fund, we are rolling over the current level of $50,000 to fund improvements outside of capital projects. Transfer to Special Aid Fund is an annual transfer to fund mandated extended-school-year, ESY, special education summer schools as per IEP recommendations. New, for the 24-25 school year, we are required to transfer monies from the General Fund to the School Lunch Fund to cover negative lunch balance accounts. Negative school lunch balances must be covered from the General Fund and cannot be covered with monies from the School Lunch Fund. Since the ending of free meal for all students, we have seen a significant increase in negative school balances on student meal accounts. Tax surceary expenses are known expenses facing our district but are difficult to predict. Over the years, we have built up our tax surceary reserve. By establishing a tax surceary reserve, we can better plan for the long term and enhance our overall financial stability. This reserve helps us prepare for potential challenges related to property taxes, ensuring that we can continue to provide quality education and services to students without compromising our financial health. Historically, before 2015, we would bond any tax surceary refunds. In fact, we are still paying off tax cert bonds from 2008 and 2010. This chart shows the volatility associated with these judgments. These are a listing of what we've refunded out of the budget for those years. In the 21-22 school year, we made the final payment on two tax surceary bonds in the amount of $185,000. We rolled this budget forward to 2023 to budget for tax surceary refunds, a known expense for our district. As we are preparing the 24-25 budget, we are maintaining this level. The average refund over the past 11 years has averaged $421,333 annually. Our current tax surceary reserve is at a little over $5 million, but our outstanding potential liabilities are logged at $14 million. Rolling over the budget, we are currently at a 4.48% increase, or $1,798,932. In this chart, you will see that the two largest components of our budget are salaries and benefits, making up 71% of our budget, increasing 4.19% and 5.61% respectively. We anticipate possibly needing to revise our debt service numbers for interest depending on whether or not we will be doing work this summer on capital projects. The same numbers that would lower our tax cap would also lower our interest expense. Bringing our budget-to-budget change for the rollover budget, we would anticipate to 3.91% if we did no work this summer. We always start out conservatively and then revise our numbers as we receive more information. When we look at BOSI's, BOSI's costs are expected to increase. This increase also includes reclassification for expenses that was previously paid or anticipated to be paid to vendors but is eligible for payment through BOSI's, generating additional aid. BOSI's is much more than occupational education, providing a vast array of shared services to districts throughout our state. The Southern Westchester BOSI's Lower Hudson Regional Information Center provides our managed IT services, and the majority of our software and technology services are through the Lower Hudson RIC. They are projecting increases in managed IT services as it is imperative that we stay up to date with the most sophisticated cybersecurity protections. The new interfund transfers is also included in the interfund transfers amount of $20,000.
Now we move to contingency and the what-ifs. Consideration of unknown expenditures is just not an exhaustive list. Who knows? But what we see a lot of times is changes in program placements and needs of students with disabilities based on their IEP. And this could be current students, or sometimes we just have new students that move in. They register, and they come with out-of-district programs and services, and we need to be ready for that. Also, changes in transportation costs for both in and out-of-district students, utility increases, consumption and price, facilities, operation, and maintenance costs. We know that always seems to come up for us. Reduction in state and federal aid, which we've seen. Tax sertories or legal issues, health issues, health insurance membership. We see the fluctuations. We don't know exactly what they are, but we will get closer to knowing that soon. How much contingency should be included in these unknown budgets? Formal guidelines do not exist. Instead, the Office of the State Comptroller provides audit recommendations, and industry standards are applied. The challenge lies in determining the appropriate contingency for what's unseen. While formal guidelines are lacking, we again turn to the New York State Comptroller's Office and industry standards to gain some insight. Our commitment to maintain fiscal responsibility while enhancing our programs is exemplified in our recent secondary school presentation. This approach ensures we remain competitive, uphold excellence, and continuously elevate our district's programs, all while remaining adaptable to these kind of dynamic circumstances.
Fund balance management. A mid-year spending moratorium is opposed mid-February of each year. This allows us to more accurately project fund balance for the year-end so that we have an idea where we will be starting the next school year. Funding reserves provides financial stability to protect the district from unanticipated expenditure increases and/or revenue shortfalls. In addition, a stable fund balance helps preserve the district's AA2 bond rating, which results in preferential interest rates on future borrowings. I now pass it back over to Dr. Goodman.
Now we discuss some of the initiatives that the Board heard tonight and for the Board to consider. Reflecting on Dr. Keough and Mr. Arthur's presentation, we will now discuss proposed changes in staffing for the middle school, high school for the Board to consider. These are not included in the rollover budget and would add to the 24-25 budget and appropriated fund balance. We are proposing additional staffing for our AP courses and high school electives. Mr. Arthur and Dr. Keough spoke to these previously, and now I'm going to present the budgetary impact. You'll see in the second column that many of these additions that were previously presented are mitigated by reductions in some courses and some restructuring. We are also proposing adding an academic interventionist to the middle school, something that has been discussed at a few of the Board meetings, a similar model to what we have at COTL. Additionally, we are proposing a new middle school electives in general music and podcasting, and a new algebra lab to help freshman students with an IEP compete in algebra in one year. Overall, we propose an FTE increase of 0.7, which is approximately $58,710. The new course catalog presented this evening exemplifies our district's mission of preparing all students for excellence. So again, we are restructuring some of the courses. We are changing some courses, and that's going to mitigate some of our additions. And you see that in the course catalog, and you probably have seen it over the last few years as we added different electives, which makes our courses more challenging and also more interesting to our students. Due to the scheduling and staffing proposals at the middle school and high school, we are changing the structure of the peer tech coach delivery model. While this support has been offered during a period of release time, we will now offer this as an additional stipend in a model similar to our instructional coaches. This means we can offer an additional media podcasting course to our sixth graders. We happen to have a teacher who's very adept at that, and a four-year engineering sequence at our high school. We also are proposing two new literacy coach stipends. This will be offered at the middle and the high school. These will allow us to support our teachers' and literacy instruction in the content areas. This reflects our commitment to reading instruction and will ensure a robust delivery model. Our coaches will lead training at the school during lunch periods, and will be able to push into classrooms to provide guidance and assistance. We know that even as we are reading to learn, students are still learning to decode increasingly complex and specialized terms and comprehend intricate and interwoven texts as they go up middle school to high school. In addition to professional development, we provide teachers. One of the programs that we'd like to bring in is Lynda Mood Bell, which is more of a comprehension program and other workshops that teachers attended just today in the state's new literacy beliefs. This onsite in-house trainer will also be best to collaborate with our teachers for the continued success of our students. Ultimately, we anticipate this budget item to require an additional $12,000 to our overall budget proposal. The topic of BOSI's ACAD has come up a number of times at recent Board meetings. As requested, Ms. Sparks and I have investigated the costs of the program. The chart illustrates the cost to send one student to the BOSI's Occupational Education Program. For a general ed student, the cost includes transportation as approximately $41,879. Tuckahoe's transportation to these programs are provided through BEPT, a consortium of Bronxville, Eastchester, Pelham, and Tuckahoe. The cost for the bus is a shared cost, providing a significant savings to the district. However, it can fluctuate from year to year depending on ridership of other districts in the consortium and increasing transportation costs. The proposed increase that our high school curriculum leadership team presented earlier will impact almost all students, those aiming for rigorous courses like AP World History, AP Environmental Science, AP Statistics, and AP Language, and those looking for real-world authentic learning like sports medicine and accounting. While we are unable to offer the type of specialized instructions that the BOSI's work placement program can provide, we have presented a number of courses tonight that present a robust, diverse, and authentic course catalog that helps prepare our students for the world of work. Our next steps are to monitor the state budget development, review school building and department requests and upcoming workshops, because we are also going to be asking for some other things. Mr. Colaswano has some sports he would like to add, like lacrosse. We have some reductions in staffing in some other programs. We have curriculum and instruction requests like the Lynda Mood Bell program, and we certainly have technology needs. We will review staffing needs for 24-25 and prepare fund balance projections and current year performance as we go along with our budget planning process. And we will present long-range financial plan to the Board. So we thank you for joining us tonight. I think it was a very exciting presentation of our new ideas for the middle and high school, looking at enhancing the course catalog for our high school students in particular, offering some new experiences for middle school students and in-depth information on the budget process. And now we are ready for questions, comments, and I invite, you know, Mr. Keough. Or to the table. We all sit at the table. Member read this on.
All right. So two very good presentations. A lot of work went into that, obviously. Thank you very much. Very informative. On the first presentation, I'll just say, definitely captures a lot of stuff we've been talking about. So we appreciate responding to all that. I know you had other inputs as well, but very much in line with things that we've talked about. So I think very bold and very much a step in the right direction. So appreciate that. And the budgetary stuff, I know we're just getting started. I know this is the first time we're hearing this and talking about this. It's always an interesting time. So anyway, I'm sure we all have a lot of questions, but first off, I just wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you for the hard work you put into that. And I appreciate it. Obviously, it's a good topic because we were very well-attended tonight. This is probably the best-attended workshop that we've had in a long time. So definitely topics that interest people. So that's good. So we'll open it up to questions. Why don't we just go down? We'll just talk from you.
I think it's great. I think adding four APs, four electives. I know it's not easy to fit this in. You know, a school this size and some kind of teachers and the staff that we have. Everyone's trying to jockey what's best for the kids and adding the right classes. I think probably a lot went into what to remove to add some of these courses. I think, you know, probably a lot went into what to remove, to add some of these courses. I think AP Statistics, I think that's great. I think the accounting one is phenomenal, especially in the world of today, like, you know, kids want to become CPAs. It's a dying profession right now, and it's something you can, out of college, you can get hired pretty, pretty quickly if you're, if you're a CPA. I guess a couple of questions, well, one is, you know, you said, you know, all pathways are unique, and I appreciate that opening that you said. And I'm all for rigor, right? I love, you know, especially the APs. I'm a little confused, and I know Amy, you talked about this with the budget, but the internship program I think is great, you know, it's a three to six-week program, but I, I don't think, my personal feeling when I ran for the board is one of the things I really push is for Bosie's. And I don't think an internship, and we could talk about this offline as the board, but I don't think that replaces Bosie's. I think an internship is more a real-life experience for a short period of time, whether someone wants to go into real estate, or, you know, any kind of, you know, follow a, a doctor around, or, you know, whatever it may be, but if someone wants to become an auto mechanic, or a carpenter, you know, I think that on-the-job, one-year of schooling is a certificate, certificate that they can take with them, right? And it's a junior year and senior year, and I think it doesn't replace an internship. So that's something maybe the board we can discuss, whether it's in the budgetary going forward for next year. So that was just.
I think, Scott, I just want to comment on that, because I think this has been something we've talked about, like, since Lauren and I came on the board. And I think the problem is, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that what Amy had shown was just for one student. So if we're going to offer it, like, how do we pick? One or two students?
Right, I know, I agree, it's not easy.
And then, like, that's the reason why they're a trade school, so you don't have to go to a four-year college, and you can go and become an HVAC technician, or, like I say, the real plumber, because I work in neurology, and the real plumbers make more than we do. So I either chose the wrong profession. But, and I think that's where that conversation, and I agree with you, but I think that that's where that conversation has always ended, and I think that we don't have the financial bandwidth to make a meaningful offering, which is why we've opted to not, because how do you pick one or two students? Like, that would blow the entire budget, right? It's $40,000 per kid, they're proposing, you know, 52 plus 12 is what, 60, you know, whatever, 4,000, like, you're talking not even two kids get to go to Bosie's.
No, I know, I know, it's something that's.
That's one thing. And then for the internship, because I have taken Tuckahoe students, the way I look at internships, because I teach clinically, like, you know, graduate-level medical students, and then I take high school students, they don't know what they're, they don't know what they want. They don't know anything about really coming to work, and I think it's just for the exposure of, like, this is what a day being a nurse practitioner, or a doctor, or surgeon, or a teacher, or whatever, looks like, and if it's something they want to pursue, I don't think it's meant to train them to do my job, or anybody else's job for that matter.
No, I think a kid, I think a student that's willing to, to go all year long to Bosie's is a student that's more dedicated than a student that's willing to do a three to six-week program in an internship. That's my personal opinion, and that's different from everybody else.
I do, I do agree with you that.
No, I agree that that's definitely two different things.
I don't think the two overlap, I think they're two separate things. I think Bosie's is about getting, getting you training and skills that you can then take on, and the internship, as Teresa's saying, is about exposure, really.
Yeah, that's just something I want to look into.
So I think they're two separate things, but, but really, the cost constraint is really the, I don't think any of us disagree that Bosie's would be a great program to pursue. It's a no-brainer in terms of its value, but it becomes complicated because of the cost. I don't know, I know we talk about this all the time, but is there any, we always say, the, the big one there is the transportation, the 24,000. I don't know, did we think about any creative ways to get around that? Um, I, you know, I know we've, we've kicked around some other ideas, but that really is the one that, that makes this so unattainable, is that transportation cost.
You need to take mine, sorry. Oh, I'll talk into two mics. Well, so we are in the most cost-effective model, which is a consortium where we share the transportation with other districts, but it's based on ridership. So we might have kids that go in the morning, other districts might have kids in the afternoon, you know, they route the buses to be the most efficient that they can. When you look at buying a buses, there, there is this whole initiative to go with the all-electric bus. We really don't have an infrastructure set up to have buses on our school grounds. We would need two, because New York State rules, like, you have to have a backup bus in the event one of your buses breaks down. And the cost to purchase a bus is well over $100,000. So we look at two buses, and we really wouldn't have, it can be financed, yeah, but, you know, it's every five years, you're financing it, and we really don't have the facilities to put them, you know, it's something we could potentially look at, but having the consortium model is probably one of the most effective models that we can have.
If it's 100,000 over five years, it's a wash.
It's 200,000 over five years. Because you need to.
Right, but you're talking about 24,000 per kid. That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, but you give a lot of kids, it's good.
Then you're paying for all the kids' tuition.
Yeah.
I think you're also paying the bus driver, and a lot of insurance is insane.
And I made in some repair and all of that.
And you also have to now have, you now have to have electric charging stations, because you have to have that on your grounds.
Which is something we're looking at, it's not for next school year, but it wouldn't necessarily be on our grounds, we don't have that facilities, but with our contractors.
Now, that 24,000 dollar cost, though, is probably, it's obviously an estimate, but.
That's what we're paying now.
Okay, wouldn't it vary, though, if you had more participants in the consortium?
It would, but it would be balanced out by what they have, so it could potentially be 15,000 a student, but we would not know until, you know, it's possible we would have, you know, and, and when they're going. So we might have two students in the afternoon and two in the morning based on the program. So it's, it's kind of hard to project. Our consortium transportation is managed through Southern Westchester Bosie's, it's another service we get through Bosie's. So I worked with them on trying to figure out the best way to project for next year, and this is what we're paying right now.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a frustrating conversation, because I think we all would love to have it, it's just, it's really hard to get over that number, it's just, it just, you know, in terms of where else we can spend money that benefits more kids versus all that, you know, it's a hard one, so.
Every year.
I guess a couple of things, the, you're doing a great job, by the way, with the college reps, I love it, Binghamton, I love it, Syracuse. What are we, you mentioned the college, are we doing more with the college fairs currently for seniors or the juniors, like, going forward this year, is there anything taking place with that?
So not so much with college fairs, so what we're trying to do is really work closely with some of our local universities. So we have two trips scheduled for Iona College for our juniors and seniors. As we said, we want to get students exposed here very early. We also work with Manhattanville to come in and do a workshop with families. We have the dean who's willing to come in and meet with students and families, also meet with our staff, just in terms of what should recommendation letters look like, you know, from a university standpoint, what are they looking for? So we have a number of things planned in that regard. We also have Binghamton University that's going to be coming back also in the spring. We have some trips that we're in the process of scheduling, looking at where we can take our juniors and our, our sophomores. So we have a few trips. We've reached out to about 10 universities, trying to schedule trips, and shockingly, many of them already booked, you know, so, you know, that's posed somewhat of a challenge. So we're continuing to explore, but like I said, right now, we're working with Iona University, as well as Matlinville College, Syracuse, we're trying to do some dual enrollment courses, as well as Binghamton University.
That's great. The, the one dreadful thing that I guess, I'm, I'll be there next year, is with the college essay. Is the AP language and, I guess, the composition course, is that have, is that part of, or is that totally different than helping a child or a student write his college essay in a class, something of that nature? Are we doing anything for the students to help them with their college essays during the, during the day?
Sure. So, college essay writing is part of the English 12 program, so that's worked into the curriculum, we'd probably stay there as we rework it for the, you know, authentic relevance. Certainly, there's something authentic relevant about writing your college, college admissions essay. In terms of the curriculum for AP, for language and literature, I, it's not really part of that focus, but it probably prepares them for that type of writing, the level of rigor, the level of.
That's a great question.
Composition, you know, structures that they're learning.
Let me just add to that, you know, we've bounced some ideas with Dr. Goodman, looking at a model called, like, a college writing boot camp, right? We did explore that idea, we felt that right now, with what we do in the 12th grade, you know, has really been beneficial. And like I said, the other thing we're trying to do is partner with some of these universities that they can also come in and help conduct workshops in that regard. So really getting the universities to come in and really work with our students, we thought that would be the best model, and we'll continue to explore. If we need to go in the writing boot camp direction, then that, that's something that we'll consider.
We, we did have a talk about the boot camp and doing that, getting kids started in their junior year, and getting either our current guidance counselors or somebody, like a consultant in, to, you know, spend some time, because that's when you really should start writing, it is junior year.
Yeah, I actually wanted to stay on that topic, so that way I don't forget.
I got one more, you're done.
Well, because I want it to be the same topic. With that idea of college essay writing and other college things, is there any thought of building that, those into the curriculum, even, I mean, I honestly believe it should start in ninth grade, and it could be part of those classes in some way. Now, obviously, it's not something that's going to be every day, but I feel like somehow that has to be fit in there, because I'm, by senior year, it's, it's just way too late. I mean, things involving even looking at colleges, so kids could start thinking about what's out there, what am I interested in, big colleges, small colleges, what our majors are offered, just to get them thinking, so that it's built into those, I mean, I'm assuming it probably, I don't know if it would be English class, but I didn't know if there was any thought of that. I mean, listen, I love the idea that we're starting earlier, we're getting more things in, but I feel like it almost needs to be built into the curriculum, and all kids are exposed to it starting freshman year, it's like, we need to start early.
I mean, we would agree with you wholeheartedly. So that's one of the reasons why we looked at revamping some things that we're doing in guidance, really coming up with that structure that we outlined in our presentation, so not just students, but students and families are getting that exposure very early. We find that there's a common trend that we need to make sure that's established and woven through each of the grades, creating some continuity with the language, and from what we started from our, our freshman orientation. So we are looking at that. We also did toy with the idea of looking at an advisory for our students, and it's something that we continue to explore, but we felt that revising some of the current structures and working more closely with the university should be a first step, but we did consider very strongly in bringing in a school council, we discussed that at the last meeting here, specifically looking at establishing an advisory. So it's something that's still, we're considering, but we want to look at, when you look at all the various pieces that we'd like to do and do for our students in the course offering, we have to pick what we value the most.
So one of the reasons we first brought in the College Cafe, and, and kids who did, and you saw some of our students who spoke at the board, said that they really had, you know, the students who went on their own volition did really use it, and said that it helped them with their whole application. We are, you know, again, the boot camp is something that, you know, we are definitely strongly thinking about, because we, you know, I've been through the college process, we know how hard it is, and we know how hard it is for kids, and it makes a big difference to get, again, get a start early. And having students visit colleges early, and colleges visit students early, starting in, you know, 10th grade, our kids, we tell the parents how important it is, and the things you need to do to get ready, but students really need to also hear it directly from the colleges and what they're looking for.
Another change curriculum-wise is because of the added AP in the 11th grade, we've looked at when we're offering the regions in ELI, so we're moving that up a little bit, and that might create more of a pocket for us to look at introducing things like the personal narrative and connecting that to the college essay a little bit sooner.
Just, just to add to what you just said, even more specific, so we're looking at offering the English regions in the 10th grade to our students who are going to be in the honor roll courses for English, so allowing them in their 11th grade to go into the advanced placement course. So it's a model that's from, I've used in other schools, and I, we felt that it's a good model for us to attempt here, and we have some scholars that are ready for it. So we want to get them started early, and also just give them more opportunities to take on additional courses, really put together their profile, so they look very attractive. That's one of the reasons why we felt strongly that even in a student's senior year, they need to carry at least five credits. We felt very strongly about that.
Less study halls, which I like.
Absolutely. And not just less study halls, but giving students an opportunity to really explore and try new courses, courses of interest, things that it can also just maybe lead to a new career pathway for them that they may not have considered.
And over the years, as you saw, and thanks to the board, we have added electives, so this year we're adding more, and we're adding more APs, and again, a strong, a strong transcript really makes a difference. So even though kids will know they're got into college in the middle of, you know, their senior year, they, the colleges and students need to realize are really looking at your courses that you're taking in senior year, so that's.
The middle school acceleration programs are great. I thought that was a, I saw, it was hard to read it from here, but from what I saw, it was great. I have a student that's coming out of Cottle, it's next year graduating from the middle school, but then we talked about, I guess you guys, we talked about the academic interventionist coming in, because besides, you know, the acceleration programs, we still have that part of Cottle coming up to the middle school that have a problem reading, right? You're a grade behind, you're two grades behind coming into the middle school, so the interventionist, I guess that, I guess, I forgot who said, I think it was.
I did.
Okay. So is that?
So the interventionist is part of that, we see, as you'll see Cottle, we believe that we can have a reduction there, that we keep on looking at the checks and balances, or else, you know, you don't have, we can't keep adding to the budget, so we believe that we'll be able to have a reduction to bring that intervention in, intervention.
Is the interventionist, is there a certification in literacy for that interventionist?
So an AIS interventionist doesn't have to have a literacy degree, they could have their special education degree, or they could have a general education degree if they're doing that work, but we are training them in literacy. And that's why I mentioned Lynda Mood Bell, which is an excellent program, especially for middle and high school students, because it's Lynda Mood Bell, it's focused more on comprehension, like, most of our kids, and as we know, some of our kids had foundations, and they've started phonics earlier, they still are struggling. So there's a bunch of kids that will need a Wilson-like program or OG-like program, but there also are kids that need, that the problem really is in comprehension, because the work gets more and more difficult, vocabulary gets more difficult once you're in middle and high school, and their, their problem may not be their decoding, it may be their understanding.
And that's on top of the literacy, the literacy stipends.
Yes, that's on top of that. Right.
So just building on that, so the academic interventionist wouldn't be someone who could provide Wilson or OG specialty, that's, that's something separate?
No, no.
Or is it the same thing?
Well, we're looking at how we might want to do it, we might want somebody to be OG, and we might want somebody to be Lynda Mood Bell, we might want to switch it like that, we might want them both to be trained in both, and we're looking at the way that we're going to do it.
Onto that title of academic.
Right.
Interventionist.
Right.
Okay. Cynthia, did you have, Scott, do you have any more?
No, I think I'm, I, I thought it was great.
I actually just want to come back to something that was stated, and, you know, I definitely want to thank Ms. Banky, because, you know, the last meeting, you sort of challenged us, and we took that on, even though we certainly had some insight, we had some training and exposure, but we wanted to take a, do a book study, and we did, you know, and it was certainly insightful, it certainly confirmed some things that we knew, but it also gave us some inspiration to dig a little deeper, and really look into our wheelhouse and consider what we need to change. So I just want to put that plug, in fact, that's a book that we have also recommended to some colleagues, and also just parents, so that's something we're looking to do. Unrelated to this, just coming back to the middle school, I apologize for just, it's not part of our presentation, but one of the things that we've been talking about quite frequently recently is just the whole idea of cellular phones, especially at the middle school level. You know, there are a couple of great books that really speak to the impact of cellular phones, so we are looking, we're doing research now, looking at other school districts such as Eastchester, that don't allow cellphones at the middle school level, right? And for various reasons, really to get students to focus on having less screen time and more contact time with their classmates. So we're going to look at doing a survey in the spring, getting some input from parents, so we can make a collaborative decision in whether or not we want middle schoolers to have cellphones, or if we don't. We want what's best for all of our scholars, so.
What's, what's the upside of having cellphones?
Well, the upside.
To me, it's a no-brainer.
I mean, I agree, you can ban them right now, we'll vote for it.
Yeah. It's all about contact.
Not that they would not be able to have it, they just won't be able to have it out.
Right.
So as a parent, you can still reach your child after school or what have you, so I just want to clarify that.
No, no, understood.
Great, great book is Disconnected. Great book, I encourage parents to take a look at.
What's the name?
Disconnected. It's a great book.
Yeah, it's very good.
Right, so I encourage parents to look at that, especially those parents who may not, well, parents who may have the point of view that a child should have cellphones, I encourage them to read that book. As a principal, over several years, unfortunately, I had to suspend more students for cellphone-related issues than any other area, because some of our students are not always aware, when you buy a child a cellphone, and they have the options of all these different apps, and they can explore, who knows what they're doing, right? So I can just say to you, as a parent, I would read Disconnected.
Also, the argument that, like, your child, and I don't know this from our district, but just at work, like, the child has anxiety, so needs to have the cellphone with them. The gold standard for treating anxiety is desensitization, right? So all you're doing is feeding your kid's anxiety and allowing it to continue and reinforcing that angst that comes with needing that immediate, you know, response and whatever. I'm fully.
Less screen time and more green time.
There you go. No, but it's so true, and you could look at it from a lot of different angles, is my point, from like, not only just getting into trouble, but also mental health, and with the amount of eating disorders we're seeing now in teens and all of that, I think there's a lot of argument to support downtime on their screens.
Agreed. And just students exploring and getting to things that, that really are more focused for adults.
Oh, 100%.
Oh, 100%. All right. A lot of questions were answered through some of these, but I just wanted to point, I mean, three things really stood out to me and obviously it was a wonderful presentation. I was glad to see that, like, you involved and all voices were heard, like, all stakeholders were involved in this process of gathering the information and actually sort of taking the ideas and implementing the changes. So that, I love to hear, like, things like that, that everybody's involved in it, that it's just top-down. So that was nice. And obviously, the college process, that was great to hear, like Pete had mentioned before. It's something that we've been all kind of talking about, that it's beginning sooner. And lastly, of course, the course catalog, which I'm going to look at it more in-depth, but I took a quick look and I thought it was very well done. And I was questioning, I'm like, how are they adding all this stuff? Like, what is this going to be money-wise? And then I was glad to see that it's not such a big change. Like, I thought it was going to be more staffing, but somehow you guys figured out a way to work it out and that was good to see. So those are the three things for me that stood out and a lot of the other questions were kind of answered. I have one question though, that, there was only one. It was with the, all of those classes, is there going to be a minimum number of students in order to run that class?
So great question. Before I respond, let me quickly say that working with Dr. Keough, we've been engaging Power School to really help our school counseling department, Steve Francesco and our two school, high school councils, to really look at creative ways to make sure we can try to maximize the amount of students that get into classes, which goes directly to your question. So we have both our middle school and high school school council department working with Power School so we can increase the number of students getting into courses. So we have not run a cap yet, but we certainly want to make sure that we're being mindful of how we are scheduling courses. So our goal is always to maximize the number of students in a course.
Will there be a minimum, though, to run the course?
I don't think we've put a minimum yet because we're still looking and seeing how we can try to maximize how many students get into courses.
Yeah, it's a scheduling nightmare, really, but-
And it's not because of lack of interest, but sometimes it's just some competing priority with the schedules. This is why we're engaging-
I guess it's wait and see, right?
This is why we're engaging Power School, who are the authority on the master scheduling process. So we're working with a consultant out of Massachusetts who's been working with us for now for the past two to three weeks. So our goal is to maximize the use of a master schedule to ensure as many students get into elective and AP and all of our courses.
And this is really exciting because over and over again, we have said at board meetings, we're such a small school that it's really hard to schedule and this is a reason why we can't do it. By getting a specialist in to see, it's still hard because we're a small school, but we are doing our best to make sure that we are all trained to use that scheduling process in the best way possible.
And another thing we thought about in developing those electives was targeting it for a specific grade level because all the grades have different demands on their time. So saying that we're designing, I'm trying to think, public speaking, for example, for 11th graders. We're going to try to work with an 11th grade schedule, make sure that's available for most 11th graders to take it. If it's available for other students, then that's great. But designing the electives through a scheduling lens for specific grades so that everyone kind of has a fair shot at it, hoping to-
And if I could say something about that, because that was a concerted effort, Dr. Keough. Since you've come here, we kept on adding elective, elective, because you had that vision and we were able to do that finally. So a lot of this that you've seen has been worked on over time and with Mr. Arthur coming in.
I did scheduling in a school and I know how tough it is, so.
So just after that, both the matters, the high school and the middle school master schedule are being built from scratch.
Right.
So I may have some awkward looks in the room just because it's a tedious process and very different. So both the high school and the middle school are being built from scratch.
Yeah, so I'll just say, you know, I echo what Cynthia just said, you know, essentially adding seven more courses for the net new cost of $58,000 is a pretty awesome, great, no-brainer exchange. I'm not sure how you guys did that, but that's, that's pretty awesome. And those seven classes are all, courses are all in great areas and great, you know, course, course content. So really, really good there. So I just had a little more of a question though. I want to understand a little more on the $12,000 stipend proposal for the peer tech coach and the literacy coach, like, exactly how that would work? Like, what type of, exactly how much interface would they get? How many kids would participate in that? What would be the sort of, how would that, how would that work for the, for the kids, basically?
Right now, we have stipends for instructional coaches that meet with teachers during their prep periods. They'll do summer trainings. They'll be called upon to do faculty meeting presentations and things like that, consult with the teachers during the school day. And they're paid at an hourly rate not to exceed that stipend. So what we thought about in terms of supporting a lot of the shifts in the way of New York State is incorporating the science of reading in the secondary levels particularly, having a staff member be that liaison, being that coach, working with teachers to supplement the other training that they'll be receiving, but in a modality that's a little bit more close to home.
So these are coaches with the teachers?
Correct.
Yes.
It's the same way we have the writing revolution, if you remember that. We have coaches doing that, same type of thing.
Tech coach has been a little bit different in that we've offered release time. So it's a shift. So actually, you'll see on that FTE slide, a reduction in peer tech coach. But then in addition, in stipend, we're just changing the, the structure by which we offer it so that we could introduce two of those new courses.
So with the, and when you think about technology, our teachers have gotten very proficient in using technology. Think about how we were before the pandemic and now they're really, very proficient. So we're using the pure tech. Before somebody had a release time, now they're having a stipend to do it and we're able to use that teacher to add a course that's very interesting to our students. I think that was like the podcasting course.
And we're at that place because of that work that they've done during those release times. That was, you know, a huge-
Will each of those, because there'll be four of them, right? Will they each specialize in different, like, areas or are you not knowing what that model's going to look like?
So with the reading, what we've discussed is that, you know, perhaps the middle school person would be more trained in Lynda Mood Bell, maybe the Wilson. And the high school person, you know, maybe would be the expert in No Red Ink, that program that we brought in. I'm not promising that, but we're looking at, we spoke about that, the three of us, about how, how they, how we may choose what our teachers would benefit from to get extra help depending upon the age of the student and the abilities of most of our students in those grades. And it would be more of a tier-one intervention, a lot of work with the general teachers.
That's different than the academic interventionist.
Right, because that's working with the students.
Yeah, this would support teachers in that general education tier-one setting. A science teacher might not think, oh, I need to teach phonics, but then a kid comes across the word mitochondria and it defies the rules of, you know, what they've learned. So using a staff member to help coach teachers across the content areas and teaching some of those reading skills that they might not have been previously trained to teach.
What's more beneficial to the children, an interventionist for reading or a, someone that's certified in, you know, reading, in, in, like, what's, what's better for the kids, for the students?
Well, no, it's not getting rid of the interventionist.
No, I'm saying, is it to have someone that's certified in reading?
What's better for kids after being a teacher for all these years? If you're talking about the intervention, you're back to the interventionist. So I really have to say, after being a teacher for all these years, is you want the best teacher that can do that work and learn that work. You'd be surprised that, you know, sometimes, sometimes there's, I mean, we don't usually do this, there's a TA that I have worked with who's like spectacular in learning the program. You have to learn the program, you have to be, you know, fully invested, you have to do the work. And that's the kind of person that's the best and it's probably the same in all fields when you look at who really does something the best. It's the person that is, who understands it, puts the time in and really has a passion for it. And that's who we would look for.
And is supported with the training.
And supported with the training. Yes. You're a great, great teacher.
So just to close the loop on the coaches, you're saying up to amount. So in other words, they would be paid based on how many hours they put in, not necessarily a flat stipend?
And it would be something that would be negotiated. We work with our teachers' union on that too to get something that would be probably similar to our, you know, we have something similar like that in our writing program right now. We have coaches doing something similar.
Now, would all teachers have access to that? Is it voluntary or is it that all teachers are going to have access to it, to be trained?
All teachers would have access to the coaches. The coaches would reach out, set up times to meet with teachers. Oftentimes, if we're discussing an initiative, we'd probably bring in that coach and talk about training and they would serve as that liaison between the staff.
But that's what I'm trying to find out. Is it voluntary or is it going to be like-
To be the coach or to work with the coach?
The teachers that they're working with. Because, I mean, in order for it to impact students, all students, my feeling is all teachers should be provided that, I'll call it professional development or training or whatnot from that pure coach.
You know, there might be workshops that the coach is leading and then follow-up sessions that are a little bit more voluntary. Teachers that need a lot more support might call on that coach.
And I think we've already, because we had such a, the writing revolution, we've had such a good experience with that. It's very similar to that. And all teachers get that, yeah.
I mean, we have our coaches that have conducted professional development. So that's at the middle school, high school level, and they've done a phenomenal job. So that has happened this year. And, you know, I've always believed that it's best to teachers to receive professional development from other teachers. There's a wealth of knowledge within our community here and we need to tap into that and take full advantage of it. So that's, that's definitely part of our professional development plan is to make sure we're using teachers to help teachers learn while we serve and help and facilitate in whatever way we can.
I have a bunch of questions. I'll go back.
Wait on hold on a budget question as well.
Okay, I won't, I won't take long. A lot of my questions have been asked. Let me just start by saying thank you for embracing the book idea and reading. It's great, it's a great read. But one of the things that, Mr. Arthur, you said during that last workshop was sort of you, when we were going back and forth and discussing it, was what kind of student are you trying to develop? And that made me think too, just like I made you think about what I'm in, you know, I'm in college mode, right? So I'm really in a sort of a rabbit hole of like all these things we should know and do. And so you have to take a step back sometimes and say, why are you doing, or what, what is the point? Or what kind of student at the end do we want to develop here at Tuckahoe? And I think that's a really, it's a really important question. So that, that was in my mind as you were presenting. And so one of the questions I have is that we're bringing the APs, which is great. We're bringing rigor and we're providing for those students who maybe are very high, you know, high performing that sometimes, you know, Tuckahoe being a small school doesn't have that, so they, maybe they look out, you know, outside of our district. So I think it's great that we're bringing them in. One of the concerns, I guess, is are we eliminating honors classes? And so I think one of the things that we tend to do in Tuckahoe, being a small district, is we swing, right? So we have, we have it and then it's gone. And then we decide, no, that's not good, you know? And part of it is, I guess, developing curriculum and, and, you know, changes in the environment that we're in at that time, if, you know, if that makes sense. But I think that, you know, I know my, my son was, well, he was taking three APs and four, four this year, my other son. And so it, there's a little stress to that. There's an element of, okay, so there's five APs and there's no honors, so is there, we don't want high and low, right? And that's the challenge. So I guess my question is, how are we balancing this with children, maybe that don't, or students rather, that they're not here and they're not here, you know? They want that middle, I guess is my question.
So one of the goals of our presentation was really to speak to the uniqueness of every child, recognizing that every child is different. Every child has different interests and what have you. So one of the things that we were very intentional in this work in developing our course catalog, as, you know, Ms. Tate said, we had many voices that were part of this process, namely our teachers. We did not identify the accounting class. Our math teachers did, right? They restructured several of our math courses, such as the principle of geometry class, by them looking and assessing what other school districts do. And many of our teachers were very passionate to make sure that we weren't just focusing on the top, that we were focusing on students, right, at every level, making sure that we're meeting everyone's needs. And I can just stress to you that we've gone to every department multiple times, working with the teachers so their voices can be heard. In addition, just hearing from students, what are courses that they want? 70% of our students are student athletes. So why wouldn't we offer a sports and medicine class, knowing that it taps the interest of so many of our children?
When you think about students applying to college, are they interested in going to sports? Maybe they want sports when they have a resume from their high school transcript or game design. That means more depending upon your major.
Right, what, what your interests are, yeah. And that, that actually-
Can I just continue to add? That's quite all right. I'm sorry. I'm very excited about the work that we've done because we've spent a lot of hours, many, I could tell you, a lot of countless hours we've spent into this. Well, it's, our scholars deserve it, right? So we don't offer any dual enrollment classes, whereas schools like East Chester offer 16. So we recognize that dual enrollment courses are different from AP courses, but still challenging enough to give some of our students who may want to consider a Westchester Community College or consider a, not a, maybe a mid-major, give them that opportunity to get a taste of what a college course is like. But if someone wants to take that course just for, you know, credit, right, high school credit, then that's fine. So giving students the best of both worlds. So that's the reason why we started to look at just the continuum of how we're meeting the needs of all of our students. My background's in special ed also. We want to make sure if our student with disabilities want to take a course, that they have the experience to take these courses. So we want to make sure we touch on everyone's needs and providing all students with exposure. Personally, I don't believe that algebra course should be offered to a student with disability or any student over a two-year process, right? We need to make sure we provide all the supports to students in one year so that by their fourth year, they have the opportunity to continue to challenge themselves if they choose to do so. So we've tried to make a lot of changes, looking at really the tapestry of who our students are, from interest to ability to skills. We just want to make sure we met everyone's needs.
Yeah, I was actually, when you take a look, and I was just looking now as you were talking about, to see like within each content area, it does like sort of run the gamut of something that's a little bit, I guess-
So do the, do most-
It would be easier versus than like going up the line, like it's a good selection to pick from.
So there's a variety there?
Yeah, the honors are still there.
So, so the dual enrollment, are we also doing WCC? You mentioned that. So you, because you mentioned Manhattanville. Are we going to dual enrollment with WCC?
So we, in the past, had a, a relationship with Syracuse University. So right now, we are exploring the dual enrollment courses with three universities, Syracuse, Manhattanville, and Iona. So we're in the beginning stages. For next year, we probably want to have a dual enrollment class, right? Because many of our elective courses, right, potentially can become dual enrollment classes. So we want to get started. We want to get our students' experience. We want to get our teachers also involved. And in dual enrollment courses, there are additional training that's required. Syracuse University is an example, require teachers to go on their campus for a week, you know? So there's some expense, there's professional development that's involved. Not all schools require that. However, Syracuse University does. So we want to make sure that we can, if we're going to commit to it, do it and do it well. So that's why we're exploring options and working in partnership with several schools and giving our teachers the opportunity to have voice in this process.
And some of these things that are maybe multiple-year developments. You know, you see the new courses, but, you know, when we start making partnerships with colleges, that's, we're exploring that now.
Did I mention something about a podcast class? Only because when I went to Tuckahoe, we had, there was journalism. It was actually the room right next door. And there was a local live channel and myself and juniors or seniors. I was, I used to video. Sometimes I was on the mic. And it was, we were on TV, we were on a local channel. But now those days have kind of shifted, right? That's really, that's gone.
Now they go viral.
Now it's podcasts. And besides podcasts and social media and kids on YouTube making, you know, millions, right? Syracuse is actually one of the biggest schools that does podcasts, I think, courses or offerings or something of that nature. Is there something we're getting developed here?
Yeah, we, over the summer, we were pretty inspired by the work James Moore and Danielle Dwyer did with the Summer Scholars Program where they had students create podcasts about what they read over the summer. So we looked at the elective cycles in the sixth and seventh grade and talked about a way that we could infuse that into our music rotation. So that podcasting could be an option.
So that everybody would have that chance. And that was one of the ways that we changed the, the technology code, the technology coach to be a stipend so that we could have James Moore available to do the podcasting because he's really very knowledgeable about it.
So let me just add one more thing that's linked to that. 30% of our sixth graders, 30% of our seventh graders only have physical education. They do not have anything in the music rotation. So we're looking to change that so that all students in the sixth grade has some form of a music experience. The podcasting class we're talking about, we offered in the sixth grade. Whereas in the seventh grade, our students would be part of somewhat of a general music requirement. Not that they have to learn an instrument or do a chorus, but we want to make sure that all students have additional exposure. And that's coming to our middle school.
That's great. One last thing and then we can move on. So the, well, those two things, sorry. So the high school profile, I meant you updated that. Was that, is that just so that when schools are looking, that it's, it's more current? I was just wondering what that meant by high school. I was just wondering what that meant by high school profile.
And that actually also leads to the question you had earlier about, you know, the reduction in an honors class for the introduction of an AP. You know, the high school profile indicates like what courses are available. So if a student, you know, is in an honors class but chooses not to take the AP, this was talked about in like Selingo's book, you know, they look, oh, why didn't they take the AP? So the highest level course, and, and TUCO has a history of if there is-
It makes them look lazy, like it could potentially make a student who opts not to do, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Right.
Or, and then even in a small school like ours, where you can't have the three different pathways in the one grade, that makes it a little bit harder, so we need to concentrate those efforts. So you will see that there is a reduction in honors courses in areas where we've added an AP. So the 10th grade, social studies, 11th grade, ELA, and science in ninth grade didn't have an honors option. But, so, yeah, so the, the high school profile really does kind of capture the course catalog snapshot, so those, you know, universities can see what it is we offer, what the applicant chose to pursue. And we, in, in our analysis of what other schools have, we've set different expectations for what we want in terms of our profile to be for next year. So right now, our profile's been established, it's on the website, but we've started working on revising that in advance of next year.
And the high school profile, I mean, we spent quite a bit of time just talking to college reps. I mean, it's our VITA, it's really what defines us, is what the universities look at to determine what kind of quality school we offer, right? So we felt that it was very important to take the time, right? We don't want to rush through it, you know, we had the presentation coming up, but we, we wanted to take the time and get other voices involved in helping us define what our high school profile should really look like. So we gave you somewhat of a framework there, but there were multitude of voices that were involved. One of the voices that we have not included yet is our G O from, from our high school, and we would like to have student voices involved. But ultimately, that high school profile is extremely important to defining who we are as a school community. Pretty much in every school district, the marquee building is the high school for accountability purposes, accountability purposes. So we need to make sure that high school profile provides the best representation of who we are, not only as a school, but as a school district.
Right, for sure. And there's just one last thing, and I'm done. The occupational, so you mentioned APs versus trade needs and that being an occupational, right? So we always, that's what we kind of, we talked about before, not to go down that, that rabbit hole at all, but just to mention what I would love to see, because this is, this is great, because what, what you're offering now are these engineering or finance, and so students as they're developing in 10th grade, you know, maybe, maybe, oh, I, I, you know, I have an older sibling, or I have a friend, or a parent, or somebody who's in finance, for example, and so they can maybe take that course. But I'd love to see them go down the track of, then there's another course, and then maybe they do site visits, and, or if it's engineering, they're introduced to civil and mechanical, and they go to those sites. In other words, we can't send you to Bosse's maybe, but maybe we can bring Bosse's here in a way that we, to Therese's point, you know, you don't necessarily go observe or do an internship and then expect to be doing that profession, obviously, but you spend time, right? You might go and with, you know, shadow somebody and go, I, I, there's no way I would do this, as in, as in, you know? So those are the, maybe we can bring the kids out into these environments more, and over COVID, obviously, we, we had to stop all that stuff, but I would like to see more of that, that we actually, and I know you, bringing them to colleges is, is part of that, is really taking our students out into those fields as they're learning about it in the classroom, I think that would be great.
Yeah, and another-
And thank you for your presentation, by the way.
Um, you know, you mentioned, you know, the, the engineering sequence, or the, the kid who's interested in X, Y, and Z. And that was actually what framed a lot of our conversations, you know, as a former engineering teacher, I thought like, you know, if I, in ninth grade, is there a sequence here for me to follow so that I can graduate and, and be an engineer and get started, you know, apply to engineering schools? So like one of the courses, the new courses we're offering is in engineering too, to really kind of, you know, capitalize on, you know, those different fields of engineering, it's so vast. How do we really kind of create a two-year sequence where we can really dive into those things in depth? And one of the other things that we've done is, you know, the community chemistry course, which we're redesigning for, for next year, has really been a place where we've tried to bring in that community through visits and then through, you know, through virtual field trips, and I think through some actual field trips that we have coming up, with that, with that in mind, you know, like, this is what we're learning about, this is how it applies to the real world, and then how can we get there? How can we bridge it so that we're there and that they're, they're here with us?
Let me just also add to that. You know, not just in the high school, but we also have one of our seventh grade teachers who actually invited a parent in with her background and did a presentation to our students. I reached out to one of my friends who is involved with Miami Airport, who does a lot of work with data analytics and AI. He's coming in, in March to do a presentation in our stats class. So we're trying to bring in people from various fields to come into our building, to present our students, just really to spark their interests, right? So we are looking at that, we are encouraging that, that's important, and we're also trying to get our students out into the field. We just think that's very, very important.
All right. Anything left for Therese? Therese, you got scraps now. Is there anything, anything that we didn't cover that you want to cover?
She'll find something.
No, she'll find something. No, I just, I, I'm like, I'm, I'm going to echo Cynthia that it was impressive seeing what you're adding, you know, statistically, it's a significant increase of like thirty percent plus across the board, right, to add these classes. Obviously, there's going to be something that we're going to have to give, and I think that's, as curriculum evolves and the world changes and the job place changes. One question I have, and I'm not sure it's for this presentation, is just about the high school transition and kids who are classified and maybe have special ed learning needs, but have kind of met certain goals, but still need certain support, how we're doing it. I think Amy's touched on it, about the comprehensive, comprehension, I'm sorry, part of learning, because I think that even though they may not qualify for reading anymore, when you're dyslexic, you're going to be dyslexic your whole life, and so that's going to creep up on you from time to time, right? And when you're in math class, let's say, and problems get more complicated, and maybe the comprehension isn't necessary at your reading level, you know, I think that can be challenging for these kids and frustrating, and so I'm curious to hear how we're going to support that.
Right, and I think part of what we talked about today was the Lyndon Bell Training, but also what we have with Do Red Ink and having literacy coaches, being able to work with the teacher on how to help all students. And if you're not, let's say you're a special ed student, you're dyslexic, but you know, your decoding is a lot better, but you're still struggling, teachers will be learning strategies on how to work with kids in math, in science, in other subjects, which-
So will it be like the math teacher learn? I guess I'm a little-
Yes, yes, it would be like the math teacher learning, like these kids are struggling. And, you know, what's the root word? What's, you know, so that kids can start to, they can start to help kids develop strategies so that they can understand beyond decoding, yes.
Right, because often IQs are high and they can do higher level work, but it's stuff like that that can really-
Right, and we assume that, you know, once kids can decode, that there's, that, you know, we know, number one, we know that the rate of decoding makes a difference in understanding, but also, a lot of kids have really nonverbal learning disabilities, or they have comprehension issues, and we can't forget that, that their decoding may seem okay, we may think that they're okay, but they're still really struggling, and that's why we're making sure on a tier one level, let's say kids aren't getting those services anymore, that, that the teachers are aware of that.
Just to add a couple of things to that, Dr. Goodman is spot on about that. But, you know, there are many of our teachers that are involved in universal design, right? Meaning that, you know, you have a child who may have somewhat of a print disability, I'm training OG, I'm training Wilson, or what have you. So being able to offer students books on tape, right, just to equalize the playing field. So there are a number of teachers that are doing that, from middle school to high school, right? Our goal as a collective leadership team is to provide teachers with as many instructional tools as possible, so therefore, everyone can be seen and viewed as somewhat as an interventionist.
And just one more thing, just to, because I know we're running up against, a, a workshop that we have after this is AI, and I believe that that in the future, and Dr. Kew has been working with groups of teachers on this, but that also will help those kids. There are other strategies that they can use that are now AI strategies, that can explain, can show you a video of what you read, and it's going to be available to everybody. The way we do things are, is going to change and vastly help everybody, and especially students with special education needs, I believe.
And that's why someone like a coach is a really important role, even at the middle school, high school, you know, because for a very long time, you know, middle school, high school teachers have been teaching content, you know, and ELA teachers have been teaching that reading piece, but, you know, ELA teachers are teaching content related to literary devices and figurative, and, and so they don't always, can't always take on the burden of teaching all the literacy skills that you're referring to. So, and even if a student in one of those subject areas has developed the compensatory skills to get through certain text, and then might get frozen at a different word, we definitely want to make sure that, that, that skill set is diffuse among the faculty. So like something like that, coach helps to do that, to, to work with a science teacher or a social studies teacher to talk about the, the word problem that might trip a student up, and might prevent you from really getting a sense of what that kid knows in relation to math, and why that literacy skill might be a barrier that can be overcome with a tier one intervention, a word bank, an oral reading of it through an AI feature or something like that.
Where, and I really don't want to drag this out like at all, but I'm going to ask one more question. So where do these coaches, it's like, in theory, this all sounds great, but I guess throughout a school day, like where do the, are the coaches in the classroom, are there like meetings, are the teachers pulled out? Like, what are the logistics of that? What does that look like?
Yeah, it's dependent on their schedule, so that is certainly a, a barrier. You know, we can work with the building administrators to create a coverage, if, you know, there's a, an observation or a co-taught thing that we want to, we want to cooperate, you know, coordinate. It might happen during extended days, it might happen during those department time meetings, it could happen during lunch period. So people get creative.
Right.
And we already have a model, this last thing I'm going to say, we already have a model that we're doing with Writing Revolution, where, you know, and I see it all the time, where, you know, the people who are coaches and that, they find time to push into classrooms, they send information out to all teachers, and also they use the extended day. I think we've had a good model of that, that we could extend to, to the writing and, I mean, to the reading and literacy.
That's great, thank you, it was really so impressive, I have to say. I feel like our presentations every year get better, and even when you think they're great, right?
Yeah.
I'm always really, really impressed.
I think we're shortchanging you and just compliment you on, on the presentation. Obviously, a lot of work went into all of these ideas and these thoughts and these strategies, it's not just about the presentation, it's about everything that got you there. So we really appreciate that. It's, it's coming through, it's shining through the effort that you're putting through. So thank you very much for that. I'm just going to punt my budgetary questions to the next budget meeting, we have plenty of time for my numbers questions, so we're running a little bit long.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll do that next time. So, yeah, so thank you very much, we really appreciate it. More to come on, I guess, more discussions on this stuff as we move along the budget process. We do have a little bit of business to do, guys, not much, very, very quick. So let's get through that, and then we are going to not close the meeting, we have to go to an executive session, we're going to end tonight on an executive session. So, which is why we're on a little bit of a time constraint. Okay, so we did comments by the board, which was our, our conversation. So let's go right into our consent agenda. Resolved, the Board of Education approves consent agenda items two through four. Do you have a motion? Cynthia, second. Therese, any discussion on these items? All in favor? Business of the board, first up, we have our second reading of a new policy, eighty-one thirty point one, workplace violence prevention. This is a policy that we're, we were mandated by new state law to, to put into place. Quick little description of it, the description is, I'm sorry, the district is committed to establishing and maintaining a safe and secure workplace for employees. In order to ensure the safety of our employees, the Board of Education must develop policies consistent with the laws and regulations of New York State. Workplace violence is a safety hazard to the district, its employees, and everyone in the workplace, and will not be tolerated. All employees are expected to work together to create and maintain a safe and respectful work environment for everyone, so this policy sort of lays out how that's done, and you can go on Board docs and read it if you like. This is our second reading, next board meeting, we'll read it again and then vote on it. Right? Okay. Approve a contract. Resolved, the Board of Education hereby approves the contract by and between District and Healthy Kids Extended Day Program Incorporated for the, for the operation of a universal pre-kindergarten program for the 2024-2025 school year, and approves payment thereunder. Do you have a motion? Therese, second. Laura, any discussion on this?
Let me say something about it. So tonight, we had our first meeting with our new community-based provider that will be providing preschool, universal pre-K, free preschool for four-year-olds in our Cottle Elementary School. We had a full house of parents who were very interested in it, that's the name of the organization that is doing the program. They do it from soup to nuts, but the beauty, beautiful part of having it in Cottle is that we can provide staff development to those teachers in terms of foundations and phonics and all the programs we have already that we use. They also will use our math program, so we get students ready on the preschool level to be able to do the same envision program that we use in kindergarten. So it's getting our younger, youngest learners, which is so important, so ready for, for Cottle Elementary School. And another great part of this program is that it's six hours, where all the other programs that we were contracting with or partnering with, it's not really contracting with, were , were five hours or less. So it pretty much mimics the Cottle Day. A lot of parents have kids at Cottle, so we're going to work with Mr. Marash. We might have a little bit of a, of a different entrance and exit, maybe fifteen minutes to make it a little easier to move those little kids in, but the parents who came to the meeting are thrilled, and we have a lot-
Do we have thirty-six?
Yeah, thirty-six, right, and we have over that in terms of, we have parents, we have a lot of interest. So we're hoping that, you know, that we, that most of the people can get in, and we ask people if they change their mind to tell us as soon as possible.
Great, very cool.[1694.91]